To the members of the Blade County Board of Education, we want to ask you a question. We want to meet with you. All of the board members, including the superintendent of Blade County Schools. We want to meet with you because there are some questions that we want to ask and there's some answers that we need. We don't want to meet next year. We don't want to meet next month. We want to meet ASAP. Because we want to know why Dr. Beatty's contract was not renewed. We want to know why Dr. Heavenbridge's contract wasn't renewed. We want to know what other procedures of superintendents been selected for Blade County Schools. We want to know what is the criteria for raises to be given to superintendents. We want to know why the taxpayers are now paying for degrees that should have been achieved and obtained before the position was filled. These are the questions that we have and we want to know the answer to why. We don't have time for closed session meetings. We don't even have time for you to consult with your lawyers. Because it's obvious that when you make certain decisions, you don't consult with your lawyers, you consult them amongst yourselves. So now, we want to ask you, when can we meet with you at a large enough facility? Maybe speaking in Elizabeth Town Middle School, a place big enough where the audience, the crowd can come, the citizens of this county can come and ask you questions. And, I have to say this, not to offend anybody, if you're not man enough to come down to this meeting. If you're not man enough to come down to this forum, then you might not be man enough to hold the position. If you're like me, this is something that we cannot keep quiet about. And how things have gone down and how there is a lack of transparency with this board. But before we go on, we're going to pray God's blessings on this gathering. That God will empower us, thank you, will enrich us with His mercy, His mercy and His grace and His knowledge and wisdom. So let us pray. God, we thank you for this gathering, God. Even in such a time as this, Lord God. We know that God, many standing here have hearts full of sorrow. Tears are still yet running down their eyes face, God, because of the dearly beloved Dr. Beatty who's no longer here with us, God. Many standing here, God, have questions. Many standing here angry. Many standing here rightfully upset because of the things that have gone down, God. But we ask you, God, for transparency. We ask you, God, for answers. We ask you, God, for guidance. We ask you, God, to lead us, even now. God, we pray for this school system, God. We pray for those who are in position. We pray for those elected officials, those who are pointed to their position, God. We pray for them right now, God. That they will make the best decisions for this county school, God. That they won't make personal decisions, but the best decision for what's best for this county, God. We thank you, God, for those who are here. Thank you, God, for those who had a desire to be here but could not make it. Again, we thank you and we bless your name. Jesus, may we pray, amen. Amen and amen. Again, many of us here, we are frustrated, angry, rightfully upset. Rightfully upset. I say rightfully upset because of the things that have gone down. Now, I figured nobody from the board would be here. But in the event they were here, there are some questions that I have personally and I want to give anybody else the opportunity to ask those same questions. The first question that I have is this. What is the criteria for a superintendent to be selected for the Blade County School Board? What are, what is, or what are, what is the criteria that needs to be met? And what is, what are the degree or degree that needs to be obtained before being in the position? My next question is this. Why was nobody else who was qualified to be in position, given an opportunity to run for the school superintendent? The Blade County Superintendent rather. Why not? What happened? I'm afraid, ladies and gentlemen, there is something that occurred in this county in what I call the hush and rush. We keep it hush and we rush right on through it. Let me say it again. We keep it hush and we rush right on through it. But again, I got to ask the question, what are, what is, what are the criteria, what is the criteria? And why was no one else given the opportunity to, to, to run for or be selected for the position of Blade County School Superintendent? My next question is this. We understand that there was a raise given. Now, I don't have anything personally against Dr. Agerson, I don't. But these are just some questions that I have that many of you may have as well. What is the basis of a raise for the school superintendent? Was there any criteria that needed to be met or was it just freely given out? Because it is the taxpayers' dollars who's paying his salary along with funding that comes from the state. So now, we are paying a high salary as well as schooling for him to go back to school and obtain a degree. Nothing against him personally. But we are paying for a degree that I believe he should have had in the first place. Again, there were other qualified individuals who could have given, who could have been given the opportunity to run for the position or be selected for the position. Alright? The next question I have is this. Why wasn't Dr. Beatty's contract renewed? That's the biggest question. I mean, when you have an individual who is as qualified and credentialed as she is. Who was good at her job. And loved what she did. And gave all to her job. What is the basis of her contract not being renewed? Now, okay, I, 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 I thought about this thing and I thought about maybe, I don't know, because of the lack of transparency, we can only run off speculation. So, I'm running off speculation right now. So, what if there was a personal issue? My thing is this. If you had a personal issue with her. But you could not deny the fact that she did her job and did it well. If you did not vote for her or, 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 or renew her contract on the basis of that, you are a messed up individual. You are a messed, and I question your moral and I question your ethics. And I question you being on this board. And if you were on the board and you knew it wasn't right, how they were doing her. But you sat there and said nothing. You are just as guilty of the, of the rest. But again, why wasn't she given the opportunity for her contract to be renewed? Now, I know the police said this was a self-inflicted wound that she, that, 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 that occurred. But there needs to be a correction made to her death certificate. Because if this happened because she was grieving because of her contract not being renewed. It was not the gun that took her life. It was a broken heart. She died of a broken heart. Because my issue is this. She fought for the superintendent's job to be secured. Removing certain language from his contract to ensure that his, that his job was secured. But my issue is this. Nobody fought for her job to be secure. And when you're fighting for other people and nobody fights for you, that is, my brothers and sisters, a slap in the face. So again, I dare say it was not the gun, but it was, in fact, a broken heart. You have someone who gave her life. I heard one teacher in an interview, well, at, 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 at the, at the, the, the pre-vidal the other day. She said that she was not just my boss, but she was my friend. And when you can say your boss is your friend, that speaks volume of the character of the person that works over you. Yeah. But again, it was a broken heart. And you know what? The Bible says, "Do unto others as you would have them do unto you." So, I hope those brothers that are on that board, oh. I hope they are able to look themselves in the mirror and be proud of what they did. Because again, the Bible says, "Do unto others as you would have them do unto you." And to blindside her like they did. That is an indictment on this board. An indictment. But I heard there was another individual whose contract was not renewed. Dr. Heavenbridge. The, the, the Director of Transportation. I got to ask the question why. There should be some logical explanations as to why we're not renewing contracts. We, we can't, we can't say just because. There has to be some reasoning as to why. And we need the board members to come out and give us explanations. We don't have time for closed sessions. It's time for open sessions. And it's time to answer the questions of the public. Because it is our vote that put them in place. It is our tax dollars that pays the salary of the superintendent. So we need some questions answered. And we need to have an open forum with all of the board members, including the superintendent, to give us the answers. As to why things went down the way they did. And my argument is this. If you are not man enough to answer these questions, then you might not be man enough to sit on the board. If you're not man enough to handle these questions the public has, the same people that voted for you, the same people that pay your salary, that you are not man enough, that man enough to sit on the board. It is our vote that puts you in place. But it's also our vote that can remove you. Let me say it again. It is our vote that puts you in place, but it's also our vote that can remove you. So again, we need to ask the question why. Again, we don't have time for, we'll get that, we'll get that with you later. We don't have time for later. We don't, time is not of the essence and time is not on our side. We need to, we need answers right now. As a matter of fact, we don't have time for virtual meetings, we want in-person meetings. Because we want to see you face to face, because there are some questions that we need to be answered. Some questions that we need to be answered. Again, it is our vote that puts you in place and it's our vote that will remove you. Yeah. So I want to give someone else the opportunity to speak your piece. Because this is our opportunity to lift up our voice, because the time is now to put demands on this board. Too much stuff has been going on with the board for far too long. And now it's over. The time has drawn now for this mess to be over. So now, we want to, again, ask the question and put feet to the fire. Like, so now I'm going to open up the floor to anybody else who wants to speak your piece and let your voice be heard.
I like, I like to ask. What are the qualifications? Is she not qualified for the position? How does she have a position so hard? It breaks my heart to see if she took her life. If somebody has to take their life for us to turn around and see what's going on. It's ridiculous. And it's sad that this woman had to take her life if she did. To get somebody attention. What are the qualifications? Can we not see the qualifications? Did she qualify or did she not? What caused her not to be put in place again? Why is this other person not qualified? And why is he put in place? Why is he put in place? These questions need to be asked. You know, we have sit back in Blade County. And allow them to do all kind of stuff. Hey, that's basic. There's a lot of jobs that our people are qualified, do we get them? We don't get nothing in our, in our neighborhood. So, it's time for, look. It's time for us to step up and ask some questions. We pay tax, in fact, I think I pay more tax than anybody. But I don't get nothing. So what is the qualification? Now, if we sit back and let this happen, something wrong with us. Something wrong with us. We need some answers. We don't need them today, we need them today. What is the qualification? Can we not see the qualification? Did she not qualify? If she was overqualified, I'll tell people, I don't care what they say about me, because he can't do nothing. If, if we as black people didn't see what was going on, all young lady was running for that position in Washington DC, we sleeping. And the same thing is happening right in our back door. So what are we going to do about it? Have a meeting and forget about it? Not me. I don't know about you all, but not me, I'm not such a person that just keeps my mouth shut. Something has to be done. We need some answers and we need them today.
My name is Lillian Gray. And I wrote the letter that you were presenting. And Tanya Beatty was one of the smartest. One of the most hard-workingest I have ever worked with. I pulled her out of the classroom to be my assistant principal. And I never regretted that for one day. She worked hard, she worked up, worked up to the bills. She was the lead teacher at her school in her grade level. She was a classroom teacher, then she was assistant principal. With the Blade, uh, Wes Blade as the principal. She came here and worked with me, with Dr. Falk. We worked right here in this building. I left this building in 2012. She kept working. She worked right here and they put her in, as the assistant superintendent. When Dr. Falk retired. She did that job well. Nobody complained about her work. Nobody complained about her work. Why was she fired? Why was she not renewed? That is the question. That's what I want to know. More, I, I, Jason, I know he was put in. I know he was put in without going through the proper procedures. And I, I know that. I know he was not qualified, he was a superintendent when they put him in. But I also know that he's worked hard to get qualified. And he's not qualified yet. The board is paying for him to get qualified. And did not open it up to the public. There were people all over this United States who could have come here and led our school system. Our school system, I am told, is in chaos. Now, I'm told that the SROs that are in the schools are not in the schools. They're everywhere else. They're doing traffic stops, they're doing this, they're doing that. When something happens in the school, they have to call it. And this Board of Education is paying for about six or seven SROs. And they have two or three. The money is, that was grand money, is going to pay for something else. These police officers are not in the schools. All of this needs to be brought out. Why is the Board of Education paying for these positions that they don't have? So, a lot is going on. And it needs to be brought to the public's attention. And the public needs to demand to know the answers. And I'm telling you, I voted early. I messed up. If you didn't mess up, when you go to the poll, vote for anybody. Except the people that got this thing. If you vote for them, if, if they get in this time in November, I don't care what party they're on, I don't care what power they're on. For, for whoever is running against the seated board members. That's how we can say thank you, Miss Beatty. She didn't kill herself, they killed her drive. And when you kill a person's drive, what else does she have? She had no children, no husband. She had the children of Blade County. And those are the children she worked for all of her life. I love you, Dr. Beatty.
I'd like to clarify something first of all. Dr. Beatty and I worked together, JCPC, years and years. She was an honest, straight-up lady. She didn't play no games. And she protected the children of our school system in Blade County. I loved her. My heart's broken. But I'll tell you the problem here. It's not just the Board of Education, it's in other places in our county. It's the old boy system. You understand what I'm saying? And until we get rid of it, we're going to still put up a wall we got. You know why? She was rotted, rotted out, rooted out, rotted out. And black people let it take place. There was not one of the brothers that stood up for Dr. Beatty. Not one. You tell me, I got on the phone and I called it, said she's not a team member with me, you talking to the wrong man. I love the Lord, folks. But I'll tell you, if you lie to me right quick. Or if I love you, I'll tell you when you're wrong. Don't you think I won't tell you wrong? I wouldn't vote for not one of these fellows. I'm not going to support the superintendent. The last man we had was Dr. Taylor. You could go in there and talk with Dr. Taylor and you could see some things get done. I know that in this county, he was addressed for something to take place, he said, "I can't do that." I said, "Again, the morals that I live by." Dr. Beatty had the same morals. She was a Christian. Dr. Heavenbridge is a Christian, I've worked with him. I've been in meetings with him when something was going down, was not proper, and they wouldn't stand for it. I don't know what it is, but it's something going on here that she wouldn't stand for. And they got rid of him. They killed him. Now, it's like that. I don't like to turn out here to be the way it is today. When I got saved and, please, God, I'm saved too, but the Lord said he was coming back after me one day. I've been ridiculed because I stand up for both black, white, Hispanics and partying. I stand up for them because they're my brothers and sisters in Christ. There's not three or four different sections in heaven. And I'm going to stand up, but when they found out that I stood up for what I believed in and I started loving my fellow man and you ladies too, y'all quit. And they don't like that. And if we don't stand up as God's people, we're the biggest army in the world. We don't stand up for God's people, friends, this kind of garbage is going to continue to go on. And there's going to be more than one Miss Beatty. She worked hard, mighty hard. I was in a JCPC meeting, the reason I was booted out is the same reason. And I think I seen one of the fellows in here while I did that before what I'm seeing. I got booted out of Chairman of JCPC because in, about three years ago, they converted into another program. And the program, they went out and when they made their monthly report, out of all the misbehaving children in Blade County, there was nine young men. Now, you tell me what fellows they were, hard rescue. Yeah, absolutely. And I stood up against them. And the system in this county that's supported by the idiots of this county. Do my pickup collection. Supported by the lunatics of this county. Booted me out because one man said, "He don't need to be in there." I prayed every commissioner meeting in this county, that plea is right there, I tell you, she'd be there. You know why? When that man got elected. Said he don't need to pray anymore. Cut me out. Vote high, team run, Peter Scher, that's number one. Get these, get these people out of here, that's number two. And get some qualified people in positions, amen.
Some people may know me, may not, that means White Sherrod. I am a member of Chairman, I'm a second vice sheriff of the Democrat Party. I want to clarify something that, uh, I add to something Ms. Ray said. It's made a comment about a lot of the SRO offices in the schools. There's a reason for that. And Mr. Hayes just, he just touched on that a little bit. We don't have enough sheriff deputies to put SROs in the schools and that is the reason they're out there. It's not the school board, it's the fact that the sheriff doesn't have enough deputies. We are borrowing deputies from Robeson County to come over here and patrol our roads. And we don't have enough deputies. I know this because I have been on recs. I'm a member of Fire Department, I respond to recs in the northern part of Blade County. And I have stepped out on three recs and I looked at the deputy standing there and I said, "Why are you over here?" Because you're Robeson County Deputy. They're over here because we are having to borrow deputies, okay? That is a problem I've got. That's what I said, there are three other candidates out there running for sheriff this time. Whatever party you are, doesn't matter, however you vote, doesn't matter. I know how I cast my vote, but I can't say that because my position is a party. But I know who I'm going to support and I know who will be the best person for that job. Now, with that being said, the problem I have, and I'm going to tell Chairman Roseard this, because he is a neighbor. When I get a chance then. If you're going to be chairman of a board or you're going to be hired in a $140,000 a year job, I think that's what it is, like Jason Agerson is. If you've got something, if you're not going to renew somebody's contract, you don't blindside them. That she just recognized and did a good job and they didn't renew her contract. You be man enough or you be woman enough, you go to that person face to face and say, "Listen. We have some issues, here they are, we're not going to renew your contract." But if they would have done this job right, she was what, three years away from retirement or four? She's that close to retirement. And I had to sit there and I laid there the other night and I thought about it, if I had been in medicine position, if I had been in Dr. Ag, uh, I call him Doc, he's not a Doc. Jason Agson position. I would have done this. And this is an option that is on the table, they have. We're not going to keep you in this position. But we want you to have your retirement because you have given so many years of Blade County school system. We're going to take you down if you will be willing to do this and we're going to fit you as principal assistant principal of a school. And finish out those two years and don't fit the woman in position, she has to take her life because of the way she was treated. Folks, I'm going to tell you one thing, white or black, I don't care what color person skin is, when you treat somebody like that, you'll treat anybody. I voted, I have already voted, I voted for the school board and I can tell everybody here, I will stand here and put my hand up, I did not vote for anyone black on that school. I voted there. And I hope everybody that hasn't voted will think about that, think about how this baby was treated. And the Heather Bridge, I think they were treated, just to think how they were treated. And ask yourself this question. Do I want to face those people on that board and be treated the same way? Do I want those, those people on that board representing my children, my grandchildren, my neighbor's children, my neighbor's grandchildren? Is that what I want in our school system? No, sir. Vote white. That's our power. One thing. We made sure several years ago that everybody's vote now counts. It's not stolen, it counts. Go to the polls, folks.
Good afternoon, everyone. I guess most of you know me, I don't talk a lot, I'm short, short on words. Uh, my name is, I'm the Reverend Dr. Michael McKinley. I've been a resident of Blade County for most of my life. And it hurts and troubles me to see the injustice that's taken place in 2022. It's hard to believe that there's not a census or a platform that we're being taxed and we have no representation and we're being taxed. Now, it, what even troubles me more is the belief that the people on the board are all, they're supposed to be diverse. So what we got, like four African-Americans, five Caucasians, total of nine. But she had not one of them stand up for her in her defense. Not once. Now, this has been happening too long. And one thing I'm going to hammer to the public is, we must vote. This is where you have your votes. Your vote is strong. We got to get up and stand up because we had too many people of color in the past and even our Caucasian brothers that helped assist them that were fed upon, beat down and killed. Because of a simple vote. Now, I'm going to dig a little deeper, this, this only take a second. One of my, my, my brothers, Caucasian brothers in Wake County. He knows I'm, I'm, I'm an advocate for the weak. He says, uh, McKinley, tell me something. Why is it that Wake County schools are, I think he said it was 80% Caucasian and 20% African-American plus the Latinos in them?
And the question is, why is the expulsion rate of Wake County schools sixty percent black? I said, brother, I got to back up about four hundred years, are you ready? So we, he, he didn't have time for that. So that's what the problem is, they don't have time for reality. Some people. When I look at the board, I'm not looking for black, I'm not looking for white. I'm looking for people that are standing up for what they took an oath for. It's to stand for the people of Bladen County. Now, everybody here today, we here, we want answers. But what have we got? Crickets. There should have been somebody here to answer some questions. Why does it take this? I even got word that probably an effort. Come on. So it is important and imperative that each and every one of us stand up and be counted. Because if you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything. Thank you, that's my.
For those people who don't know me, my name is Horace Bell Davis. And I'm running for Board of Education Countywide on this election. And, um, I, I just got to say, it, it is tremendously a tragedy that we have to come to this. That we have to meet in this setting in order to get the answers that we need. We have got to make a change. This county is going backwards fast. And the reason why we are not getting what we need to get is because we're not standing together. We have to stand together, okay? We have to stand together. If we don't, we will never get what we need. Our kids depend upon us. Those teachers depend upon us. The administrators depend upon us. And when they don't have our support, it's hard for them to do their job. Okay? Anybody that works in the student system or has worked in the student system, you know what I'm talking about. It's, it's a tough job and they do it day to day. Miss Beatty was a prime example of the best that Bladen County has got. She did it day to day.
Amen, brother.
Every single day. She never missed a beat. She was on the task, every single day. And the way they get her, to not even give her a motion, that means that we don't even consider you. Twenty-eight years of her life, she invested in herself. And by doing that, she turned around and gave those fruits of her investment back to Bladen County. Okay? She worked from the bottom to the top. And they did nothing for her, nothing. They wouldn't give her a motion. That means we don't consider anything pertaining to you.
All right, all right.
That's what that means. And every single board member, every single board member is elected. That means you have a voice. That's why you have the District One, District Two, District Three, because those people speak for that district. Okay? And when you don't say anything, you might as well say, I agree to what's going on. Bottom line, bottom line, you can't tell me that there's nobody standing here that hasn't had a teacher that has affected their life in some way. Everybody, everybody. And if you don't raise your hand and you don't, uh, uh, read it, then I don't know how you could. Because every teacher, somebody has touched your life. Somebody is the reason why you're the person that you are today. And Miss Beatty touched thousands of lives. She never gave up. If she didn't have the answer, she showed you how to get the answer. She was committed, she was dedicated. And the result of what they did to her cost them. She just couldn't deal with it anymore. I only wish, I only wish that we could turn the times back and make it right. But we can't. But what we can do, is go to the polls and vote. And strike that vote for the right people that's going to make it the way it's supposed to be. That's going to make sure those kids and those schools have who they need every single day. Good bus drivers, good teachers, good cooking staff, everything that they need. We owe that to them, okay? Nine hundred thousand dollars is what they talking about putting in a tennis court. Tennis court. In West Bladen County. Nine hundred thousand dollars. Do you know how many teachers that can pay for? Do you know how many teachers that can pay for? Nine hundred thousand dollars, that's almost a million dollars. Who's going to play on it? Serena Williams don't go to school here. And not only that, not to be biased, but how many of us are playing tennis? Okay? Tennis and golf, that's not one of our top sports. Football and basketball has always been. Everybody knows that. So why are we spending nine hundred thousand dollars on that big tennis court that's not going to service anybody but maybe five percent of the school? And you got to push them to get that in. It's wrong. They are taking the county's money and they're utilizing it the wrong way. And it's, it's got to stop. When you put a man in position as the top administrator in this county and they pay for his education so that he's qualified, put that position. I'm sorry, that's a problem. No top administrator has had that opportunity. I'm sure there's some teachers standing out here today, how many in Bladen County paid for your education? None, none of them. You had to pay for it. You worked, you sweated, you put forth the effort to get where you are today. That's what Miss Beatty did. She invested in herself. She listened to the people who groomed her. Stanley Richardson, Ms. Graham, and so many others. She listened to them. They laid the groundwork. And all she did was follow what they said and that's why she got to where she was. She put forth the effort, she put forth the work and that's what he should have done. And then you give him a raise on top of it? Taxpayers money. We are paying for this. Not the Mitch, Miss Beatty would have been paying for it. Because she's a taxpayer too. That's wrong. It's wrong. And I hope I didn't offend anyone. Enough is enough. We need strong people in this board of education. And I will not stand for it. I will not. I promise you, I'll be on the task every day. I'll be there. I want to be the yes baby. I want to be, never have been able to start now. And how you have our kids out here with no school resource? They said, oh, we just going to put some officers in it. Well, I'm telling you, that's a long soup waiting to happen. Because every single, every single school resource hour is supposed to be served by. Every single one of them. It's a different way of doing business when you dealing with kids. Different way, you think I'm lying? Go over there and touch one of them. You wake up real fast. Go over there and touch one of them, okay? So I'm telling you, the time is now. The time is now. We have to do it now. Not tomorrow, not next week, not next month, not next year. Now, we have to make the change now. Let's come together and let's do what Miss Beatty would have done for us.
My name is Fletcher Collins and a few things I would like to say. I've known Dr. Beatty for a long time and age-wise, we right here together. My father used to do mechanics work for our parents for many years. And you know, and just looking at the reality of things and a lot of things I heard spoken on her behalf. And you know, when I look at it, the reality is this. And I want to speak from the power of a light. Light have a lot of power. But it's things that people don't think about when it comes to a light. A light so very important and it, it shines so brightly. And it shines its best in the darkness hour. But also you notice in the summertime, that light is attacked very heavily by predators of enemies of enemies. You ever seen green frogs? You think, why that green frog is sitting over my life? That green frog sitting there because his bugs begin to attack that light, he's there to eat the bugs. So he's an enemy of an enemy. Well, when it comes to bringing that to a light, you see, when you're in position of power, you need to understand. First of all, when you're a Christian, you're going to be attacked. Paul said, we are troubled every sign of it. You see, because she was that light, that's why she was attacked the way she was attacked. And if we go back to history, everybody that was a light, that stood up in our color. And when they stood up and they fought for us, they either killed them, they put pressure on them to cause them to commit suicide, or they did things to make it look like it was suicide. So whenever you are a light, it will attract all kinds of enemies that come at you. Because they are not accepted of that light. And I heard him quote a few things from the Bible, I remember when Apostle Paul went and they had this one that was a, a suisse, a witch doctor. And when he, he rebuked the spirit in her, the majesty and everybody got together and they congregated lives. And they said that these men is causing problem within our city. So they made lies and they locked Paul in the prison, thinking that when we lock them up, that's the end of him. But you know what? That light was a light and even when he got in prison, his light was still shining. Even to the prison guard, he got to the point at the end of it, when the jail cell shook loose, he said, what must I do to be saved? I say that to say this, see, she have affected a lot of lives, that's why you here. See, her life wasn't in vain and I'm going to close it right here. You see, many people look at it and I've heard the negative things say about her because of the power of her light. But I want to remind y'all, Bible believers, a tree is known by the fruit it bear. She didn't have to come and tell you that she was a Christian. Read your Bible and you will see Dr. Beatty. The life that she lived, the example that she laid. There's no scripture in the Bible, you got a lot of preachers out here can challenge me on it. There is no scripture saying that a person committing self-murder that they can't make it. Ain't no scripture. So I challenge that with anybody. But I want you to understand, there was a man in the Bible. And when Jesus came off that ship, he yelled out, Jesus announced, you coming toward me before a time? And when he got close to him, he said, what's your name? He said, my name is Legion, for we are men. If the man was in his right mind, would he took his own life? So there's pressures in life, some said, I wouldn't do that. You don't know what you're doing. There's pressures in life that you know not of. You know, it's people may look strong to you. But because we don't have that power of communication, people around you might be some in the mix right now that's contemplating right now. So that's why it's good to strike up a conversation and talk to people. Let folk know your love and try to get in, okay? But I want y'all to know, she let her light shine. And you know what? Her light is still shining bright. So what took place, took place, but the question is, what we going to do about it?
But I have to say a few things right here. I understand that the Board of Education belongs to the public since this incident. An administrator from a school went to the door to try to get in. And they talked to the administrator through the door. Now, I called the day after and Tanya died. And I called and I called and I called, I couldn't get an answer from him. And I have a grandchild that I'm raising in one of these schools. It could have been a crisis, but nobody answers the phone. That's another, but I want to say something to us as black folks. I want you to listen this good. I stayed in education for forty-seven years. Stop making excuses for bad children. Our children in the schools are doing bad things. If they do bad things at your house, they're going to do bad things at the schoolhouse. And if you take up for them and don't help the school with those children, you will meet the judge in the jailhouse. I'm going to tell you, we've got to raise these children, stop them from killing each other. We can't put that on anybody and I want you to know racism goes both ways. White people hate black people. Black people hate white people. It goes both ways. Vote on the person that can do the best job for everybody. Don't be a racist and then accuse other people of racism. Racism is everywhere.
Everybody else that went before, they, they, uh, announced who they were, I failed to do that. I apologize. But, uh, my name is Corey Lyons. I am the pastor of First Miss Ray Baptist Church here in the Lisbon Town, North Carolina. I'm also the president of the local chapter of the N W A C P here in Blade County, North Carolina. And, uh, my, 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 my brothers, my brother Anthony, uh, he hit me up on Wednesday after, um, after we heard the news, what happened to Dr. Beatty. And he said, what are we going to do? I said, brother, we got to do something. So initially we tried to, we, we were trying to schedule this meeting for Friday, but it was scheduled to rain Friday, so we pushed it back to Monday. Now I would have to admit to y'all that this right here is near and dear to me. Because I know a young man who had a, who was supposed to have had an interview with Dr. Beatty on Tuesday. Because he had interest in getting a job at Blade County Schools. But the thing is, the interview never happened because Dr. Beatty wasn't there. And that young man that had the interview with Dr. Beatty supposedly was my youngest son. But the interview never happened. So this right here, I can't let this rock. I, I, I can't, I can't let it rock. I can't let this rock. No, 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 no. Even though she's not here, her spirit still lives on. And for those of you who were at the service on yesterday, uh, as we memorialize her, remember her life, the preacher said she was, her light shined. Now, we can't say her light shined with, and only speak of it in the past tense. We have to speak of it also in the present tense because her light is still shining. And the evidence of her light shining is the fact that we're here. We're here. And again, I dare say, the board members, they owe us some answers. They owe us some answers. I don't know how long they going to have the, uh, the doors locked in Board of Education, but we need to have a meeting ASAP. We need to have a forum ASAP with everybody on the board present.
That's right.
I don't want any, uh, virtual, no, 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 no. I want to see your face because we need some answers about, about, about what happened. We need some answers now, not tomorrow, not next year, not next week, but we need some answers right now. We need answers right now. Before we close today, anyone else would like to speak at least today? Before we, before we depart today, is anybody else want to give you the opportunity?
I have one question. My name is, uh, Bobby Collins. I have one question. What are we going to teach and tell our children? They want to know, they want to answer as well. My fourteen-year-old grandson is a middle school student. He came to me and said, Grandma, I know Dr. Beatty. I seen her, she's been at my school. What happened to her? Who did that to her? Who upset her like that? So what are we going to tell our children? What are we going to do? Are we just going to sit here and meet and discuss and meet and discuss? We need to take action. We need to let people know, this is not acceptable. Dr. Beatty was a person, a human being, a person that loved people. I remember her when she was a teenager. She worked at the A and E along with my son that's passed on. She deserved better than what she got. No, no lies, they took that position, but we need some answers. Just like everybody else said, we need some answers for this question. And we need to be able to answer our children, because they want to know too.
My name is Cynthia Deverry. And I don't have any children in the school, but I have great nieces and nephews. And I want to say, we're meeting today, but what are we going to do after today? What's going to happen after today? And I'm, and I'm not up here, to me, it's not a black or white thing, it's the citizens of Bladen County. We have a shortage for teachers. They're putting anybody in the classroom before our children. And so my thoughts are, what do we, what do we go from here? Are we just going to meet today or what are we going to do after? There's, there's so much that's going on in this county need to be addressed. Now, you all, a lot of you all don't know, during the heart of the pandemic, we were setting up vaccine clinics in this county, trying to help our people get vaccine. And all because we were given a small incentive of a hundred dollars. The director of the health department would not allow, didn't want us to do it. But me being a citizen of Bladen County, she don't get to tell me what I can and cannot do in my county. So we set up the first clinic. We had over three hundred people, black, white and Hispanic, waited in the heat to get vaccine. On that Monday, W A C T shows up at the, at the county commissioners meeting only for argument for Charles Ray, because he was the chairman at the time, Ray Charles, whatever his name is. To argue that he did want that in his county. Because he felt like if I didn't have to get paid to get a vaccine, why are we paying these people? But guess what? That helped our economy, that helped our county. What can we do with a hundred dollars? You can't buy no house, you can't buy no car, you can't even pay a note. The money was spent right here in this town. So to make the long story short, yes, we called EMS to help us, we was not expecting that type of fraud. So to make a long story short, yes, we called EMS to help us, we was not expecting that type of fraud. Because the director made it her business to come on site and tell EMS, you can't help them. We only got the vaccine, a hundred and thirty-eight people that day, we had to turn away two hundred people. This has been going on, we have free CHW certified by the state of North Carolina to do bring in a lot of resources in this county. And guess what? The health department don't want no part of it. Terry Duncan, Dr. Terry Duncan. She don't want no part of it. So a lot of resources you all could have, you're not getting. And most of the gap for eight hundred dollars during the pandemic in the grocery, if you applied, we gave it to you. You got all that money, but when it came to bringing in other resources, they don't want you to have it. They don't want you to have it. And I'm, and it's not a racial thing. It's people who think they control Bladen County and the people of Bladen County. We're not a communist county, we're not a communist country. So people, you all need to be in the know of what's happening in your county. Now, I work, I was assigned to Scotland County, can I tell you something? They got the best of the best of them. If people aren't vaccinated because they don't wanna be, if they going home because they don't wanna get up and get the food, or they not allowing us to get the food. Every county, we serve nine counties, every county allow us to tell them, and we free. We are free to do whatever you want us to do. But Bladen County is the only county, the only county, don't want us here to do nothing.
How'd you say his name was?
Ray Charles, Charles Ray, whatever it is. I'm saying that, I'm saying that the same thing. We only had two county commissioners who stood up and helped them. We did something for breast cancer. Terry Duncan didn't wanna do nothing for breast cancer. Each month they add some type of health awareness. We're willing to put out information for people to know to do prevention. And guess what? She won't work with us. She won't, she hasn't. So you all need to be in the know, not just something going on with the Board of Education, your entire county. You could be so much further along, but they don't want that. So you need to stop attending your county commissioners meeting, asking them why. When I go in there, I take my work badge off like I do now. And I'm a citizen of Bladen, I pay my taxes. You all need to stay in the know what's going on in your county. So much more we could have in our county, but their powers to be think that they really the powers to be, but they are not. So where do we go from here? Do we need again? Who's gonna formalize that we all come together to stay in the know of what's going on in our county? Because it's gonna affect us all. If we need to stay in the know. If I had, I'd go a mass melon if I could afford to. But you have resource, we have resources that's available to you all. Did y'all not know we have resources that could help you pay your rent? Help you pay your condo, your fire insurance? But because our hands is pretty much tied. So y'all need to stay in the know what's going Bladen County right now is at the bottom of the polls. And they said if we keep putting these people in positions that's not doing it, and stop vote for people that don't have no education or background.
With, with the question she asked, where do we go from here? This is not the last time. Uh, me and myself and Reverend Hayes, we are going to be scheduling, uh, meetings. We're gonna be scheduling meetings and, uh, look for the Democratic Party, um,
Democratic Party page on the Facebook. And, uh, we're gonna take you the time and the place and we're fixing to invite this lady, come tell us some more things.
Also, look for the Bladen County NAACP page, it's on Facebook, uh, like it, subscribe to it, whatever you got to do to it. But we're gonna have information on there because we don't wanna just have this meeting and that's it. That would be a slap in the face to Dr. Bailey and anybody else that was done wrong in this county. So we're gonna continue on with this because we have to be agents of change. We have to be agents of change and we just can't come together and talk about it. We have to put words to action, put feet to the pavement, hold people's feet to the fire who are in position to make change happen. And I believe it's us who gonna make change, not necessarily those on board. But, but our voice, our vote can influence what happens in this county. But we cannot sit by our, we can't sit by and be quiet, we can't sit by and not put, put to action, uh, put, not put our, put our feet to pavement. We have to make this happen. Again, this is not the last time, so please, uh, go on the Democratic, uh, page of Bladen County, look for the NAACP page because we will be having meetings after this. And hopefully, uh, the, the, the next plan is to get in contact with somebody from the board, if not the superintendent, because we need a forum. We need an open forum, but, but the, not, not, not in here, because that's, that's not large enough. We need a space big enough for more people to come and ask the questions that need to be answered. And we need some answers. We need some answers. Oh yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And they got to walk for it.
Yeah, E-Town Middle, that's good, right there. As a matter of fact, they're having their next meeting at E-Town Middle School next month, we can't wait till next month. We can't wait till next month, we need answers now. We need answers right now. We can't wait till tomorrow, next year, not, we need answers now. So again, keep your eyes and ears open, Democratic page of, uh, of, of Bladen County, NAACP page. Thank y'all so much for coming on.